How did it get here?
Starting now.
Start the pledge of public testimony.
Public testimony?
Do the pledge from the left.
Okay.
Go for it, Gil.
There it is.
Gavel was just coming down.
You're late. You're late.
Just demoted you there.
Did somebody got the dam burst or something?
No, it's the sewer pipe in downtown Visalia.
Traffic jam. Next.
It was jammed up. Wow, nine o'clock. Good morning, and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting on February 22, 2017. Roll call, please.
Gong.
Here.
Mealy's.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Whitlatch. Commissioner Petriano did inform us that she would be absent today. Aguilar?
Here.
Okay, please join me in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up, so that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the chair. Is there anyone who would like to speak on something? Please step forward and your name and address for the record, please.
Over here, sir, on this one.
Yeah, this side.
Eric Olson, 2424-6, Road 168. And I'm here, my neighbor Paul Herzler wants to split off his house, and I believe if that is granted...
Through the chair, this is actually a potential agenda item, so you'll have a moment at that time when we call people up for their hearing.
Is that on today's agenda?
Yeah, it's on today's agenda. Today's agenda. Right, right. So just wait, hold on one second.
Yeah, we'll have public comments, so you'll be able to talk at that time.
Okay, but it was just gonna create a landlocked piece of property.
You'll get a chance.
Right.
Sir, this is for people that want to make testimony on anything that is not on the agenda today.
Actually, Chairman Elliot, it's not the one you're pulling. Just so everyone here knows, we're actually gonna request you to pull Item 5A, that public hearing, which is for special use permit number PSP 16-020, Valley Naturals compost. So if anyone here today is wanting to speak on that issue, we're gonna pull it. So you'll be re-notice and you can come back at the next Planning Commission that we consider it.
Okay, that one was, looks like it's a recommendation for a postpone anyway, so. Okay, we'll move on. If there's no other comments on things not on the agenda, then we'll move on to the tentative parcel maps. Approval minutes.
Approval minutes.
Oh, no, we knew, that's, sorry, I'm still on the freeway. Do we have a motion to approve last meeting's minutes? I want to make one correction. Under the approval, we've got all the names spelled correctly, except I need another T on that one. The other ones are good.
I will add that T, sir. Sorry about that.
Can I make a little movement? I'll make a motion to approve the public hearing for all seventeen minutes.
I'll second.
Ball, please.
Gong.
Stain.
Mealy's.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, now we can move on to the parcel maps, and because we missed a meeting, we've got eight of these on our agenda today, and we generally consider those together, and we'll open the public hearing if anyone wants to speak on any aid of those.
Right. Now he can come up if he wants to, right?
Well, that's a different item.
No, that's it right there. He wants to talk about B.
Oh, on B?
We can pull that one.
Okay. Is that the one we want to pull, or are we...
No, through the chair, we'll have that for separate consideration, if you're gonna open the public hearing for all the parcel maps. If there's anybody that wants to speak or pull any particular one to talk, address about it, now's the time to pull that. B, we had a person come up, so you'll have a separate consideration of presentation and discussion. If there's anybody else here to speak to any of the other parcel maps, we can pull those two and have them held as separate considerations, and then keep the ones that no one has any comment on as one.
Okay.
Separate vote as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was for B, what we're talking about.
For the parcel maps, yes, for a pool to have discussion.
Okay, we're gonna...
Another one as well.
Okay, so we're gonna open the public hearing on the parcel maps. We take those together, although we will be considering B separately. So is there anyone like to speak on any of the tentative parcel maps that are being considered today? Okay, seeing none.
Excuse me, Chair. Did you want to discuss?
I think he meant A through...
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I was just verifying, there's nobody else who wants to talk about anything about the parcel maps.
Chairman, would you like to consider the other ones first before B?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll take the other ones, and then we'll take yours separate as soon as we get through A. We've got a lot of them on here today. Okay, so we're, we still, we have the, we're closing the public hearing on A through H with the exception of B. And I guess we need to consider these then in separate motions, since we don't have any discussion on those. And we're not considering B under these motions. So we'll start with A, tentative parcel map number PPM 16-045. Is there any further discussion, or can we entertain a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14, pertaining to construction and location of limited numbers of new and small structures, and conditionally approved tentative parcel map PPM 16-045, with a final map waiver.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Mealy's.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, I think we can move then on to C, since we're gonna consider B separately. So that's a tentative parcel map number PPM 16-046.
I'll make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA guidelines and state SEQA guidelines, and pertaining limited numbers of new and small facilities and structures, and conditionally approved tentative parcel map PPM 16-046, and waiver of the final map.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Mealy's.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, now we're on D, tentative parcel map number PPM 16-053.
I'll make a motion, we approve category exemption consistent with California Environmental Quality Act and the state guidelines, SEQA, pursuant to Title 14, California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 16-053, and waiver of final map.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Mealy's.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Now we'll look at E, tentative parcel map number PPM 16-047.
I'll make a motion to approve categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14, California Code Regulations, Section 15061, Subsection B, Subsection 3, general rule, as a project that does not have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment, and is therefore not subject to SEQA, and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 16-047, the final map required.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Mealy's.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, and then we're on Item F, which is tentative parcel map number PPM 16-055.
I'll make a motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approved tentative parcel map PPM 16-055, and waiver of the final map.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Mealy's.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Okay, now we're at Item G, tentative parcel map number PPM 17-001. That's in the Exeter area. Do you have a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion.
Or I am. It's all yours.
That we approve categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14, California Code Regulations, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 17-001, and waiver of the final map.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Mealy's.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Aguilar. Yes.
Okay, and then we'll move on to Item H, which is a tentative parcel map number PPM 16-049, and this one's north of Kingsburg.
I'll make a motion, we approve the category exemption consistent with California Environmental Quality Act and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14, California Code Regulations, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 16-049, and waiver of the final map.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Mealy's.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Aguilar. Yes.
Okay, so now we can jump back to Item B, and I just want to clarify for the record. A lot of these tentative parcel maps, you know, don't have significant impacts of any kind. That's why we're kind of taking them in rapid-fire fashion. Occasionally, there's someone that wants to speak up on one of those items, and that's what's happening here with Item B, tentative parcel map number PPM 16-050, and it looks like, I guess, April will be our contact on this one.
Hello, I'm April Hill, Planner 3, our Resource Management Agency. I have just zoomed in on the aerial of the parcel in question. Road 168 is here. The parcel that's being divided is, has indirect access along a northern, along the northern edge, based on an old map that created these parcels, these two parcels.
April, you're saying that the subject parcel does have easement along the north side of the property to the west?
Right, there was a parcel map in 1979 that included a 25-foot easement along the north side. At that time, we did not record maps, illustrations, but there is reference to that easement.
And also, for the record, the applicant currently also has access on the southern side of that property through license, if you will, handshake agreement with that neighbor to the south. So there's two points of access. The only real issue that's gonna come forward is we had made a condition that they do reciprocal easement on the southern side, and that doesn't look like that's going to happen necessarily, so we wanted to remove that as a condition. But they still do have access on the northern side through the tentative map from 1979.
And so is there an easement coming down from that part two?
Farm Road, Farm Road, but all it needed was the access to the larger parcel.
He's on his own property there.
But if they're, they're gonna, I mean, so they're splitting this off, so that little house, that section right there... They're splitting, I mean, how, does he have an easement on that property?
He has a driveway on his own property on the west side, west side of his property.
All the way up?
All the way up.
Well, okay, now, there needs to probably be a condition on the deed there that if he sells that, that he has to grant an easement to it from the north, because as it stands...
For the home site.
Pardon?
For the home site.
That's correct. Is that correct? Am I correct here on suggesting that?
You are correct. We do offer that in many of our, many of our conditions of approval that upon sale, that that would be entered into the deed.
Yeah, let's take care of it now, so that they don't have to worry about it later on.
I'll include that as a condition of approval.
Any other discussion then, or questions for April? Well, we'll open the public hearing.
I'll find her.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing, and now your comments are appropriate. Come on up to the mic, please, and then state your name and address again, just for the record.
Eric Olson, 2424-6, Road 168, and I own the property between that and Road 168. And just for clarification, the piece that's gonna be split off before it is sold, they will have an access on the south side directly to Road 168. They will be, he'll have to get an easement for that. That is correct?
As we are stating it right now, we would like them to get an easement, but it'd be difficult for us to enforce off-site improvements when they already have potential easement. And we'll let the applicant's engineer speak to this matter further, but as we are right now, it would not be a requirement of this map to have that southern access. We will put it in there as something that we would like to have as a discretionary condition, but it's not a mandatory condition.
Let me, let me ask you this. Would you be creating a landlocked piece of property?
Would you say that tentative map does have access? Would that, is that an easement?
I would say so. It would have scriptive, do you think?
We believe they would not be landlocked, that they would have access on the northern piece right now, and he does have license to travel along the southern boundary as we sit right now.
Years ago, when that was drawn up, it was never recorded, that easement. But I never made an issue of it, and just always let him use that. However, if they're gonna split off that house, you know, I think they need to have a straight shot to Run 68 and not go through my property, you know, because of that. And in addition to that, he's talking about building another house on that property.
Well, yes, if he was to, if he's allowed to have another house on that property, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. But as far as the, we'll let the applicant's engineer answer the full access that's going to occur on this, on this site.
All right, thank you for your comment, and...
Do you have a copy of this report?
Probably not.
I have it on my computer, so. Sir, step up to the mic, sir, because we're recording this.
Yeah, all that goes on, just the farming practices, the dust mites, you know, he's, he's like a half a mile on dirt road to access that property the way it is, and it would just be much more convenient if he could just shoot straight out to 168 on the southern side.
I agree, sir, but I think we're gonna hear from an engineer and find out why. We can't get this. But, Mr. Chair, would, Mr., is it Collins was his name? Would he have a chance to rebut anything here?
Well, yeah, he could come up again, too. We're still open with the public hearing. Go ahead and speak on behalf of the applicant.
Good morning. Appreciate the time before you this morning. My name is Neil Zurlang. I'm a licensed land surveyor, and I'm representing Mr. Herzler on this matter. My address is 2908 West Main Street here in Visalia. And just very quickly to reiterate, Mr. Olson's parcel, as well as Mr. Herzler's parcel, was created by a waivered parcel map project in 1979. At that time, both parcels were entirely agricultural in use. There were no structures on those parcels. Along with the approval of that parcel map in 1979, a 25-foot access easement was included in the project, and that was located along the north boundary line of Mr. Olson's property. And it extended all the way from 168, Road 168, to the west property line of what is now the Herzler parcel. In 2006, Mr. Herzler made an application for a financing parcel map, excuse me, for the creation of his home site parcel and the financing of it, which you see now located in the southwest corner of the Herzler parcel. This issue was addressed at that time, and the Planning Commission or the approving body affirmed the existence and legal recording of the 25-foot access easement to the Herzler parcel at that time as well. In order to access the newly created financing parcel, as well as the parcel that we're considering today, which is, in most regards, an exact carbon copy of the financing parcel, an easement was created along the westerly side of the Herzler parcel to access the newly constructed home site.
That's from north to south.
And that's from north to south, running along the Herzler west boundary. So I believe that there is no question regarding the legal access to the parcels involved in this project. What does complicate this matter, but it is really not a part of the project, is that Mr. Herzler has entered into verbal agreements, if you will, with the property owners to the south of his parcel. And that does lie entirely south of the south property lines that you see there, and does not affect Mr. Olson in any way. But Mr. Herzler has invested several thousand dollars in proving the access from Road 168 easterly directly to his home site. It is somewhat of an oiled slash paved type of drive. It has, Mr. Herzler constructed a white rail fence all along that alignment. There was grading that has occurred, and Mr. Herzler has maintained that. Now, this access point is also utilized by other parcels, not only to the south here, but as well to the east, and so it's utilized by multiple parties. And obviously, Mr. Herzler desired a more direct access to his home site. He was concerned about driving along the frontage of Mr. Olson's residence, and that is why he invested in that. Mr. Herzler has been advised that it would be in his interest to obtain a recorded easement just to protect his investment on this southerly access point. But that drive, again, is not part of this application. It does not concern any of the parcels that are involved in this project. I would also like to point out that Mr. Olson's home site was not present at the time of the creation of the easement that runs along his north property line. So that home site was placed after the fact, or after the creation of that easement, and we can't control, I mean, the easement was there before the home site, so we can't control where we drive. We have to access legally through that alignment. With that, I've probably belabored the point, but if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer those for you.
So we've got, so we've got a legal access from the north, and then a newly created easement north to south to the subject, to the smaller, to the home site, right?
Just a small correction, Mr. Diaz, that, that access north to south, I believe, was created at the time that we did the financing parcel.
Oh, okay.
So I believe that's in fact, because that financing parcel would have had to have legal access at the time of that creation as well.
So that's already, so that came in the same time that the northerly easement was...
No, that was done separately.
Oh.
The east-west easement across Mr. Olson's parcel was done in 1979 in order to create the entire Herzler parcel.
Okay.
In 2006, when Mr. Herzler came in to do the financing parcel for his home, that is when the 2000...
Okay, I follow you now.
Or the easement along the west property was created in 2006.
So we've got, so basically, we've got a legal access to it, but then we've got a practical and a realistic access that is being used.
A physical access that Mr. Herzler uses the vast majority of the time. Mr. Olson can perhaps speak to that, but it's my understanding that the northerly access is primarily used for agricultural purposes, you know, at more important times during the agricultural season, so that trucks can circulate and, you know, work on his parcel during harvest and other times.
Have they, are they in negotiations for an easement along the southern side?
Yes, Mr. Herzler has spoken to the owner, and I believe that will be coming at some point in the future. But I would request that condition number four... point in the future, but I would request that condition number four be removed, because it is not necessary for the approval of this project. Again, Mr. Hertzler is pursuing that, and has been advised to, it would be wise to protect his interests there, but that is not a, a condition that is necessary for this project, or required by law for this project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zurlang. I think, if you'd like to comment again, or if there's any other comments related to this project, please state your name again.
Eric Olson, 24246 Road 168. If, if this matter could be cleaned up, I would encourage you to do it, and at least attempt to get an easement on the south side there, and it would, it would just make for a far more desirable piece of property for Hertzler to sell, and would increase his property value if he did have that straight legal access. It would be a benefit to him, and I would encourage you to do it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So if there's no other comments, I think we can close the public hearing. What does planning staff feel about that?
If it would please the chair, what, what we are thinking at this time is that we don't strike that condition in its entirety. There are mandatory conditions, and there are discretionary conditions. We can, it's not one of our standard conditions. So we could add this, keep this in here as a discretionary condition, that it is the intent to get this easement to the south, but it's not wholly based on, we, we will let this project proceed and the existing easements, but it's not wholly based on whether they get this condition or not.
That seems reasonable. Is there any more comments from the commission?
Yeah, I don't want to necessarily strike it either. I think, I think we need to push the matter, because it'll come back eventually, or it may very well come back, and now's the time to take care of it.
Okay, I guess if there's no more discussion, then we can entertain a motion on this one.
To, to be clear, through the chair, that this is a, not a mandatory condition, in other words, that this parcel map can still be achieved, can still be approved today, conditionally, but it's not a requirement that they, they do the easement to the south in order for this to be complete. We will record, and whether they ever are able to accomplish that southern easement or not is irrelevant to us, but it is the intent of this planning commission and of the opposition that they do try to, to get that easement. We want that on the record, that they will, will try to get that easement.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
But, Mr. Brock, that's just about like striking it, from what I can see.
But it is on the record that it was the planning commission's intent and per our discussion today that they would attempt to get it, and if they, they fail to get it, at least we had on the record that we were acknowledging it. It's one better, it's one better than striking it.
Okay. I guess in reality, we probably can't force it, there is legal access already established, so we really can't dictate from here.
It would be a secondary off-site improvement, and you can't force someone, we cannot hold up finaling a map on off-site improvement, so this is a tweener. This is probably the best that we could do.
Mr. Olson, I guess it's not perfect. There is legal access to it, we really can't mandate this too much. We could ask them to, but I think we're probably just gonna have to do it.
We could reopen the public hearing for a second.
Just real quick, who, who owns that property? I believe it's Rob Hilaridis that would grant the easement, but I am not certain.
Do we know it, Paul?
No, that's not right.
It's a different name, and I'm sorry, I do not recall it.
So, need a...
Okay, well, let's close the public hearing, and then we'll entertain a motion.
You gonna do that?
Okay, I'll make a motion.
We're leaving four in, right?
I'll make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption, consistent with SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14, pertaining to construction and location of limited numbers of new small structures, and conditionally approve tenancy parcel map number PPM 16-050 with two exemptions on the final map waiver.
Is that, is that, and then?
And with the condition as stated.
And then with the condition on number four as stated?
As stated.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Wielacz.
Yes.
Agila.
Yes.
Can I make a quick statement, through the chair?
Sure.
I love to hear those baby sounds, so. I have a grandfather seven times, and it's quite, it sounds nice, this music, happy sound.
Better than cell phones.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna move on to special use permit, and this is a public hearing portion of the agenda, special use permit number PSP 16-020, Valley Naturals Compost.
Through the chair, that's the one we're gonna continue?
Yeah.
We're re-noting?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna...
Hold off.
We need a motion to...
We just need a motion on this one.
I'll make that motion, we continue 16-020.
Yeah.
With the full notice to the newspaper and surrounding property owners.
And there is no one here that wants to speak on that today, so we can move on then. Okay. All right, so we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Wielacz.
Yes.
Agila. Yes.
Okay, I guess we can go on to item B, special use permit PSP 16-008, Carlos Bobadilla. And this is a categorical exemption and special use permit to allow mobile home park. And we have Andrew Pacheco.
Good morning, Chairman Planning Commissioner. My name is Andrew Pacheco, I am the project planner on this project with the RMA. Today, we are here to discuss the application for a mobile home park, special use permit PSP 16-008 for Mr. Bobadilla. Now, the site on this project is in Allensworth, within the hamlet of Allensworth. It is located on a north side of Avenue 32. The site at this time contains a house, a mobile home, and a proposed mobile home. It was duly notified February 5th, 2017, and also identified, noticed in the Visalia Times Delta for hearing. Now, this is the aerial photo. Now, the property there is about 295 by 290 by 150-foot square piece of property, with frontage on Avenue 32. Now, Avenue 32 is a county-maintained road. The applicant is utilizing the driveway located to the west of the property along the west property line. The mobile homes there are occupied by the family members. The house is occupied by the owner of the property, which is the applicant's mother. The facilities there, the dwellings, all use septic tanks and leach line fields. Water is provided by the Allenworth Community Service District. They also have a fire hydrant located approximately 210 feet away from the site for fire protection. Now, this is a driveway that is utilized by the applicant for the mobile home, and the mobile home's located in rear, so each dwelling has its own separate driveway. This is a second mobile home occupied by another family member. Now, the house is located to the left of the property, which is occupied by the owner of the property. This is the fire hydrant there that is for fire protection, it's 210 feet, as I indicated, and that is not too far away, so they do have that. Now, the zoning on the property there is RAM, surrounding north and east and south. Now, to the west, they do have agricultural land there, which is vacant at this time, it is zone AE40. Now, Exhibit A identifies a proposed mobile home, the driveway is shown, the mobile home is in the back, the house is in the front, and the property is large enough that if it was to be divided, this parcel right here wouldn't need this application. Now, the only reason why it has this application is because the RAM zone doesn't allow multiple mobile homes unless you have a mobile home park, and that is the reason why we are applying for a multiple mobile home park for a house and two mobile homes, because anytime you have two mobile homes, it constitutes a park, unless the owner lives in one. This is the mobile home that's being proposed. It's in the back, it's already there. There wasn't existing one, this is a replacement, and as you can see, he's been maintaining it, he's got a driveway covered with gravel, so this right here would also identify that the fire warden can come out here with a fire truck if necessary, and go ahead and protect the mobile home from fire if something ever should happen. Now, there are no species that are endangered by the placement of this mobile home, as you see that it's all out there, and everything's west of Road 56. Now, the recommendation is to approve it with a category exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 regulations and Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to the limit of new structures and small facilities, and conditionally approve this application for a special use permit 16008. Now, under this exemption, they can have up to three units there. This is the alternate, you can move to approve subject with modifications through additions and deletions of the conditions as discussed, move to deny, or refer back to staff for further study. And this concludes staff's report.
Any questions from the commission? Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody here that wants to speak on this Allensworth project? Good morning, please state your name.
Good morning, commissioners, my name is Caio De Caddara. I live at 8234 Avenue 32 in Allensworth. The applicant is my neighbor, so I'm here to support the application. We've been working for quite a while to make sure that we see compliance with county requirements in Allensworth. So to see a project like this come to fruition in Allensworth is worthwhile, and it's worth commanding, so I'm asking for your approval. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Are there any others? Sometimes in Allensworth, we get a lot. Not today, though. Thank you. And if there are no others on this Allensworth project, then we'll close the public hearing on this one.
Mr. Chairman, I think we have one more.
Oh, we do have one more, okay. We'll keep it open then.
Yeah, good morning, my name's Carlos Bobadilla, 8212 Avenue 32 in Allensworth. I actually live at that property, and like Andrew was saying, I've been, we've been having trouble trying to get it approved and all this stuff, and, and it's all family, like my mom, she needs help, she's disabled, and she needs, like, to take her to doctor's appointments, so it's me and my sister, like, going forward with that, so that's why I would like to see if you guys could approve that application for us. Pretty much it, so, yeah, thank you.
Okay, we appreciate your comments. It looks like we've done the hallmark here. Anybody else?
Through the chair, I'd just like to make one comment for, regarding this project. I'd like to compliment staff on, on processing this. We looked at different alternatives, like Andrew said, it could have been split, the parcel could be split, but we're looking at cost-effective ways to be able to make reasonable accommodations for the family's needs. More expensive to do a parcel map and, and all of that. This is a way that we were able to accommodate this and still keep it limited to the three mobile homes, so this is the appropriate way, I believe, to process this map, or this permit, rather.
Should quit, we are limited to three homes on this, is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner Diaz, there's Condition 28 that identifies the structures on the property that are limited to that particular project, this case.
Right.
And also, the Allensworth Company, the water company, I've also checked with them February 15th, and they are in compliance with their bills and payments and connections with this facility to the third residence. So they have done everything possible to be in compliance with the law and with us, with this special use permit, and they've been working at it for a very long time, and they didn't have any guidance until just recently, when I took the project on.
So now that it's called a park, though, we don't come back here next year, and they subdivide this and put 40 homes out there?
No.
Through, through the chair, no, and, and in addition, they will be subject to the state requirements, too, because this is a mobile home park, so there will be potential state inspections and whatnot, so there are additional protections there that, above and beyond what might normally occur in the county.
Okay, if there's no other comments, then we'll close the public hearing at this time. And any discussion from the commission?
I'll make a motion, if it's okay with my fellow commissioners, to approve a categorical exemption, consistent with SEQA, SEQA guidelines and state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14, California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approve special use permit PSP 16-00.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Wielacz.
Yes.
Agila.
Yes.
Okay, item C is a setback variance, number PSV 16-002, Michael and Teresa Enz. We have Dana Medlin on this one.
Good morning, Chairman Elliot. Commissioners?
Looks like she enjoyed the proceedings.
This project is to allow the construction of a garage addition within the 50-foot building line setback area of Road 32. Project is categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to Title 14, Section 15305, Class 5, pertaining to minor alterations to land use limitations, and the project is compatible with this exemption because the project setback variance will not change the land use or the density. Entitlement is found in Section 7-191215, the Building Line Setback Ordinance, states that a variance may be granted if said granting is in harmony with the general purpose and intent, and so that the spirit of the ordinance shall be observed, public safety and welfare served, and substantial justice done. In order for this variance to be approved... In order for this variance to be approved, a finding needs to be made supporting practical difficulties, unnecessary hardships, or results inconsistent with the general purpose of the article if it would result in strict and literal interpretation and enforcement of the article. So, the factors that support this finding are that the RA zone, which is this site, it requires a side yard area of five feet. Because the subject site is located on a corner lot, the 50-foot building line setback of Road 32 actually projects into the five-foot setback area for the side yard, and the side yard fence is located 31 feet from the center line of the roadway of Road 32. The proposed garage addition would be located five feet inside the fence line, so they do have the side yard area in compliance. And the structure would be 36 feet from the center line of Road 32. If the applicant was to comply with the building line setback ordinance, the structure would need to be built 19 feet from the side yard fence line. Therefore, the strict and literal interpretation of the ordinance is depriving the property owners of the same property rights and privileges that their neighbors enjoy because the neighbors only need to comply with the side yard area of five feet. Clear? This project was noticed according to the law, and staff has not received any comments regarding the project. It's located on the southwest corner of Finley Drive and Road 32, and this is north of Kingsburg, about 2,400 feet north of State Route 201. So, it's in the RA 12.5 zone, which is a 12,500 square foot minimum, and the properties to the north and west are zoned RA 12.5, and they contain single-family residences. The property to the west is zone PD RA 12.5, and this contains the Kingsburg Golf Course. And the property to the east is zoned AE 20 and contains agriculture and rural residence. This is an aerial view of the project site, and we're right here. The proposed setback variance would allow the construction of a permanent structure, which is a 456-square-foot garage addition, storage shed, which is located 14 feet inside the 50-foot building line setback of Road 32, and the project meets the findings of approval for the setback variance. And staff is recommending that your commission approve in one motion the exemption from Secua and the zone variance PSV 16-002, and that concludes staff's report.
Well, the only thing that's not in compliance is the fence. Is that what, that were the variance?
Well, yes. I suppose the fence is inside the 50-foot setback of Road 32, but the fence has been there since the houses were built.
But, okay, but the new struc, the structures and everything are all, they're in, they're in compliance with setbacks?
Okay. We can open the public hearing on this one, if anyone would like to comment. Seeing none, I guess we can close the public hearing and entertain a motion on this one.
I'll make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with Secua and State Secua Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 pertaining to minor alterations to land use limitations and conditionally approved setback variance, number PSV 16-002. I'll second that.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Phillies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
DS.
Yes.
Willatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, we can move on to...
Mr. Chairman, are we expecting this next one to be a law one?
What would give you that impression?
Well, I'm gonna go to the bathroom because I'm going in.
Okay, we're gonna take five minutes. Please.
You shouldn't ask so many questions.
We're gonna get back here. Okay, we're gonna reconvene here on special use permit number PSP 16-028, and this is Bobby Tracy, and this is a categorical exemption and special use permit to allow a contractor's storage yard. And this is north of the city of Woodlake, and Dana...
Yes, it is. Thank you. This is the project history for this site. A code violation was opened on this property for a contractor's storage yard without a special use permit, and the first notice was mailed on April 4, 2016. Applicant desired to clear the violation as quickly as possible and submitted the application for the project review committee on April 10, 2016. That meeting was held on May 12, 2016. A couple neighbors appeared at that meeting and expressed their opposition to the proposal, citing the fact that the applicant was not in compliance with the covenants, conditions, and restrictions that were placed on the property. The neighbors were informed at that meeting that the county does not enforce CCNRs. The special use permit was placed on hold until the applicant obtained and finalized some outstanding building permits on the property. Those permits were finalled on December 29, 2016, and staff then proceeded with the processing of the application. Staff has received five letters in support of this project, and the inspections that the building department conducted on the project site demonstrate how enforcement has been effective in bringing this project into compliance with building and zoning So, the project is categorically exempt from Secua according to Section 15301, Class 1 pertaining to existing facilities. The use of this section is applicable and appropriate as the exemption that is, will utilize existing facilities. Pardon my tongue stumbling. Entitlement is found in Section 16B of Ordinance 352, which allows contractor's storage yards in the AE 20 zone that do not involve any manufacturing, fabrication, or retail sales of construction material or equipment, provided that the use is accessory to an onsite dwelling occupied by the owner and provided that the lauded parcel does not exceed five acres. No special use permit for contractor's storage yard shall be approved unless the open storage of materials and equipment is restricted to an area surrounded and screened by a solid wall or fence or compact over green hedge, not less than six feet in height, provided that no material shall be stored to a height greater than the wall. And the proposal is in compliance with these requirements. In addition, in 2009, the Board of Supervisors accepted the planning commissioner's interpretation of zoning policy related to contractor's storage yards for staff to implement when reviewing projects. Number one, planning commission deems that both small businesses and equipment storage for smaller operations was intended to be allowed. Secondly, the ordinance was written to allow for a small office of less than 400 square feet with a restroom facility. Thirdly, the accessory office would be limited to no more than two non-resident employees, and that no more than 10 employees would visit the site on a daily basis. Four, hours of operation shall be restricted to 30 minutes before sunrise and 30 minutes after sunset. Five, the secondary use is considered to be less than 50% of the total parcel size. And six, no more than 10 vehicles be allowed or designated contractor's storage yard properties, and supporting equipment shall be screened as well. This project was noticed according to the law, and staff has not received any response to the notice itself since it was mailed to neighbors, and we did expand the notification to the neighbors beyond the 300 feet to notice the couple neighbors who were in opposition to the project. The project is loaded within the county, located within the county-adapted city urban area boundary for the city of Woodlake, and the land use designation is agriculture. The city of Woodlake received an early consultation notice in July of 2016. Staff has not received any comments from the city, and the project was found to be consistent with the applicable Tulare County general plan policies. Located on the east of road, is located east of Road 260, 206, sorry, approximately 300 feet north of Avenue 352, north of the city of Woodlake. So, we can see right here. And this is the zoning of the site, AE 20. Contains a single-family residence, a barn, a pool, a poolhouse, playhouse, two C-trains, ground-mounted solar panels, and a contractor's storage yard. Surrounding properties are all zone AE 20 and contained rural residences and agriculture. This is an aerial view of the site. The site plan. Storage yard is back in this area. There's an aerial view from the Google Earth. This project is a contractor's storage yard for the storage of equipment utilized in the applicant's business, which is constructing watering ponds, maintaining dust control, and disking for farmers, as well as grading roads, mowing, and general maintenance for solar farms. The equipment includes four forklifts, two backhoes, fire-water trucks, two small trenchers, two brush hog attachments, two disking attachments, one pickup service truck with welding equipment, and other miscellaneous equipment such as straw waddles, boards for forming concrete, lumber, wire, et cetera. The applicant also does maintenance on his equipment. The facility does not do maintenance on vehicles not utilized for the business. Used oil is the only waste material being generated, and that is stored in containers and disposed of by a licensed disposal company. The days of operation are generally Monday through Friday, and the hours are 6:00 to, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Per the Board of Supervisors' resolution that was mentioned earlier, a condition of approval will restrict the activities to one-half hour before sunrise and one-half hour after sunset. An existing fence surrounds a property. Again, a condition will require a minimum six-foot-high solid wall or fence, and the equipment cannot be stored higher than the fence. And per the Board of Supervisors' resolution, a condition of approval shall restrict the area being utilized for their storage yard to be no more than 50% of the entire property. And also, a condition will restrict the parking to a maximum of 10 stored vehicles on the subject site. And staff is recommending that your commission approve a categorical exemption consistent with Secua and conditionally approve special use permit number PSP 16-028. And that concludes staff's report.
Dana, it's like doing subdivision is part of my job. It's my understanding that whatever CCNR is on, that's a civil matter, not our matter at all, even though including comments of that.
That is correct.
We're, uh, if I had used, it was, uh, per our, uh, right.
If there are no other questions, we can open the public hearing here, but I want to caution, in the interest of time, if you have a comment that's basically echoing the comment that we just heard, please, we need to limit these. So, let's hear, let's hear for and against, and we can start with testimony for. Let's try it that way. Is the applicant here, or somebody want to speak on behalf of the project?
My name is Bobby Tracy, 20800 Avenue 352, Lot G, Woodlake. We're here to get a use permit for our yard. It's, we keep it nice and contained, stacked, covered. The front of my place is all taken care of. We put fences all the way on the two sides, the northern and the southern yards. We have, we planted shrubs. They're growing. They're getting about like this now on the berm, and we planted climbing jasmine on the southern fence, because when you drive up, that's what you see is fence, and I felt bad for Harry, so I planted climbing iseman all the way down, jasmine all the way down his fence. So, and like she said, I have done everything that was required by the county to do and without any squabble. Fire, everything, so, and I'm leaving everything up to you guys to make a decision.
So, the issue at the beginning of this was you didn't know what was required, and now you do.
No, I didn't. Uh-uh. I didn't. I was, it was, it was weird to me that you buy a piece of property, and I had to get a permit for a C-train. So, we started the process, and then the equipment came about, and we had some big equipment there, but we took them out. We have our service truck. If you look at the, the stuff that's there, you know, I have a, it's six-and-a-half-foot high fence, and it's 90% visibility, and it's all surveyed, both sides surveyed, so there's no problem with that. And we've had the property surveyed to make sure it's got flow and all that, so we spent a lot of money to make, and it's all gravel. I mean, the sheriff, Tulare County Fire Department came out, and they approved it. You know, we got seven, eight inches of, and it's just not gravel. It's, it's grinding asphalt, so it keeps the dust weight down. And then, when we do have some dust, we monitor it. I have a full-time gardener on site, so he monitors that if there's any dust. So, that's outside of the contractor yard. But, I didn't want to waste a lot of your guys' time. I just, thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
Not yet.
Okay. All right. Would anyone else like to speak on this, then? I guess we can entertain a for or against here, since we heard from the applicant.
Morning. My name's Calvin Campbell, and I reside at 20800 Avenue 352, Unit C. I'm kind of diagonal to the Tracy's property, and I just wanted to show my support. The Tracy's are real professional. He's a perfectionist. He hasn't impacted our community at all. The noise is not an issue. Doesn't keep me up late at night. Don't wake up early hearing anything. In addition to that, we have like a real unique kind of community there, and I just really like how we all work for each other and we're real supportive of one another. So, I just wanted to voice my support for Bobby today.
Is there anyone else that would speak against the project? Come on up. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Robert Motta. I live at the same address, 2800 Avenue 352. I'm at the end of the common road. That would be parcel E. To what has been said in support, I agree totally. But, if you look at the aerial photo that I submitted, you'll notice that all the homes on the west side are in line 20 feet of each other. We're not allowed to build any further back. The homes on the, on the east side are, can build anywhere on that property. All the letters of support that Bob has in his written form that Adam signed all live on the east side. And as you can see, the first one coming into that particular property never even comes to Bob Tracy's property. The next ones is a Duke who live 400 feet back away from Bob Tracy's job site. Then you have Calvin, who just spoke, who's never home, who works all day. So, you're right, he's not privy to the daily activity. The last unit on the, on the east side is the furthest away from Bob Tracy, and all the homes and trees serve as a natural buffer for noise and visual aspect, and he also says that it doesn't really bother him too much. But I do have a letter rewritten by him in his own writing saying that if the, if this job site was up against his, he would probably have a stronger opinion regarding it not bothering him. There was one letter, he's the owner that lives on the west side... There was one letter, uh, he's the owner that lives on the west side, and it was comment, and he lives the furthest away from Bob Tracy's place. He has an orchard of five acres that separates him from Bob Tracy. So he also has no visual and limited noise to his activities. As you can see, the, that forms there a natural corridor, because you also have another orchard on the west side, the full length of the four properties adjacent to each other, that you can see it's plain, it's clear, all pasture land, and the noise is dirt and visual only goes north and south. I live three hundred and thirty feet away, thirty feet beyond the requirement of three hundred feet to be notified, but I also submitted pictures showing what a picture looks like from my area of three hundred and thirty feet, and then one with inside the three hundred feet, and they're basically the same. As you can see, he has equipment right now that is, that does not be completely covered by the six-foot fence. So this has been a long project, started back in January, in February. I, the fact that Bob Tracy has bought two pieces of property on this area, one on the east side, now on the west side, he should have been aware of the restrictions. And this goes, like, I'm completely aware that the county cannot enforce restrictions, nor is it your responsibility, but I would ask for some consideration to the fact that he, his history now has shown that he doesn't comply with either the Tulare County zoning, Tulare County Building Department, or with the C C N Rs that are recorded and binding to the property and not to simply the first owner. He's had a whole year to demonstrate that what does it really take to qualify? The exemptions or the conditions that Tulare County has placed has pretty much taken care of a few of those concerns we have, like the large equipment, you know, things that are over six feet tall. The only thing that doesn't cover is the transportation of that equipment, the trucks, the large trucks. We have a twenty-four-foot-wide private drive avenue, three fifty-two, which is the public road that has access to our private drive, is only twenty-two feet wide. So as you can see, any truck, semi-truck with a seventy-foot van to bring materials or equipment takes all of the road, public road, as well as our private road and the shoulders to turn in and out of that private road, as well as into his particular piece of property. Like I said, I have a letter from Jeff Seabird, who's one of individuals that gave a letter of support, but again, as you can see, he lives the furthest away. And the way the question was asked, do you see much of a bother? Well, no, he doesn't, because he has a natural line of houses, trees, brush, landscaping that acts as a buffer zone. And all of the ones that have signed approval all live on east side. The ones that live on the west side, adjacent to Mr. Tracy, are opposed to it, because we have that natural corridor and see everything down, down the road. One more item, the clarity on that resolution that the Board of Supervisors had made back in two thousand nine, it talks about small business. That, for me, is not very clear. Is that a, an individual that has a trailer that he does lawn gardening on his own, or is it a lawn gardening or landscaping individual who has ten or twelve of those trucks? It's not real clear what a small business is. With the solar farm, commercial solar farm installation, commercial landscaping that he has, as well as earth moving equipment, I don't see how that resolution or how this can qualify as a small business. In that letter, he talks about what kind of equipment he likes to have, that, which all will be over six feet tall, you know, the, a regular water truck, as he called it. The forklift that he has, the forklift is one of those forklifts that has, you know, four wheels, but has the arm overhead that can reach, you know, two, three stories high, lifting materials up. An excavator, we all know what that is, it's just a simply a big, large backhoe. Currently, he has two large equipment, a road scraper, heavy equipment operation, and a four-track, heavy equipment tractor that five feet of it sticks up beyond the six-feet solid fence that he has right now. And in, the C C N Rs were, yes, I'm very aware that they are not part of your privy, do you have any responsibility, authorization. The only consideration I would have is that he's shown that he has no compliance consideration for those that apply to his property, and he has, and it also reflects his non-compliance to the building, to Tulare County, the Building Department, because all of these things that he has right now were not existing. They were all done privy to him applying for the application with a special use permit, and also obtaining building permits. They were all forced on him, they were not voluntary on his behalf. The staff, from Mike Washam, Dennis Lehman, Aaron Bach, of all indicated to me, and Code Enforcement Mike Groh, have all indicated to me that they do not have the staff to enforce their own rules and regulations. So this past year has demonstrated his lack of compliance, and also the lack of the county's manpower to enforce these rules, other than neighbors noting down what's going on, calling Tulare County staff and telling them, let them know what's going on. Well, that's been going on for a whole year, and that has not happened. One other thing that's very important to me is that it says in your ordinances that when you apply for a special use permit, you cannot establish or operate until you have the actual use permit in hand. So he was, he was allowed to continue to establish more, invest more money into it. It's a shame that he has to spend money and then not be allowed to do it. And we have sit there, the other residents, for three, for a whole year, living with this. It's caused animosity within the neighborhood, and it's caused friction. And as you can see from the aerial photo, is that everyone has kept their pieces of property open, you know, non-agricultural. We all want to have that open, wide-open space. There was a comment in the, in your packet that was given to by the county staff, that three pieces of property that abutted, if I pronounce that right, abutted his, Tracy's property, were in non-agricultural use. Well, I plant those pieces of property alongside him in oats every year, and cut them, and feed them to my cattle. The owner in the back on the west side that's adjacent, he has an olive orchard, so it isn't non, it is agricultural in use. We've had nineteen separate owners, Bob Tracy being counted twice, and the property has looked, has been left the same as it was forty years ago. So we have all moved there with those restrictions in mind, with the same intention of having like-minded people and to live in, in a peaceful, wide-open space. The last one, which I am not an expert on, I will read to you with the help of a developer who's constantly here in front of you, and this is the, we would like to challenge the categorical exclusion from CEQA. And, and, let me get to the point here. That both the applicant nor the county has conducted any assessment of the private road that serves the property, and whether it is capable of carrying the loads of, from the equipment of the applicant use on site. In the staff's recommendation, it says no more large earth-moving equipment, but it doesn't talk about the transport vehicles that bring smaller equipment. It is also our understanding that, that the, that the category exclusions are usually reserved for ministerial actions, which are routine in nature and do not require discretion on the part of the commission, and that the special use permit does not fall under this category. At minimum, I would request that we have a higher level of environmental, environmental assessment to be conducted, because the county, even though they say it's a private road, they do not do maintenance. When this particular piece of property was subdivided, the county subjected the developers to a specific criteria of how that road was supposed to be built, and how much of that road was supposed to be dedicated to the county. So we want to know whether those standards of forty years ago apply to the standards that are being requested if this particular piece of property was developed, and does this, the existing standards of forty years ago apply to the equipment and activities that are present?
We appreciate your comments.
Okay, that's it.
I think the question I would have is, you know, our main task here is, does this operation comply with the zoning?
Yes.
Of that area? So let's assume it does, and it's all brought up to permit. In a perfect world, everybody starts business after they get the permit.
Yes, correct.
It doesn't always happen, and we have a lot of them before us where that's not the case, but if, is there some specific mitigation that would allow you to support this if certain things were done? Is there anything like that?
Oh, yeah. Like I said, the recommendation that the county has stated was a complete surprise to me, because in talking with the staff for the whole year, it was given to me that it was just a done deal. But they stated a six-foot fence, equipment has to stay below that, you know, which I, which I would include that any containers brought in to store material, that also has to be below the six-foot fence. So it really surprised, we took care of a lot of it. I just don't want to open the door, because then that would let another individual try something else. I cannot speak for all the other opponents. I would have to sit down with the other three individuals and talk as a group, because in our C C Rs, only the four houses on the west side only have four voters. And there's three of us that disagree, and one who's applying. Yes, I believe there could be some, some workable due, but that's never happened. It never happened. There was never any, Bob Motta, I'm planning to do this, what would be acceptable to you? It was just something, I'm doing it, and that's the way it's going to be done. And I also don't want to be extorted to the fact that I do have civil action, because it has been challenged. The restrictions have been challenged before, and we succeeded in giving a preliminary injunction. The other, he was one of the supporters of Bob Tracy right now, and he did not want to go any further based on his lawyer's advice. So we do have that action. We're trying to eliminate going to that. Yes, we want to live in harmony. You know, I drive down the road typically waving, now I just drive and go straight, because there's always a stare downs and looking at each other's eyes, or somebody yell at me and saying something, how do you like the road now, kind of stuff. I don't respond to it, that's very uncomfortable. So I would like, yes, to sit down and see if we can come to some kind of conclusion, and Tracy recognize that it is a waiver to the restrictions, zoning has been met, and it's only for him, if the other neighbors might agree. But I, I would have to sit down, talk to them. Yes, I would make that a condition that, could we have time to do that? You know, and then come back, or, you know, whatever the protocol may be.
We've certainly done that in the past. So let's, let's move on, see if we can get someone else to speak.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this project?
Morning, gentlemen. My name is Trinidad Renteria. I live in, I live at less than three hundred feet from this property we're talking about. Any equipment that this man has, has to drive by my house before it gets to his. If we're talking about height on, on equipment, Mr. Bob Motta carries his cattle trailers over six foot, I say nothing about that. And he's saying something about six foot. The gentleman that is applying for this, and I hope you approve it, has done a lot to build our area, to make it look better, not to make it look bad. I just want to say, I hope you approve it, because it's been, it's been, the area's been, looked better, built a nice fence in the front, nice fences in the back, covers everything. I, I worked, I lived there for thirty-seven years, and it's better than it was before. Just want to let you know that. Mr. Bob Motta there has some little problem. He should discuss it with us and see what, what happens, but as far as I'm concerned, I hope you approve it.
My name is Dennis Duke. I also live at two zero eight hundred Avenue three fifty-two. I'm, I live just due east of Mr. Tracy. I'd been in the property there since two thousand and six, and, and I've seen nothing but improvement since Bobby has bought, purchased the property. I see nothing but improvement, he's put a lot of money out in landscaping and maintaining the property. I, I see Bob has also gone out of his way to try to help the neighbors by putting up their privacy fence, and that's not something that he was going to do, but he did trying to do that out of the kindness and, and trying to make this all work out for everybody. Again, Mr. Motta has not talked to us all formally, he's not ever called a community or a neighborhood meeting to discuss this, but I, I see Mr. Tracy making every, every effort to make this thing compliant with the law and with all of us as neighbors. So I, again, would recommend that you approve this for Mr. Tracy.
All right, thank you.
My name is Alma Russo. I live at two oh eight hundred Avenue three fifty-two, Unit F. I live between the Mottas and the Tracy's. As far as Bobby Tracy, I would like to consider him a friend, and as far as Bob Motta, I would like to consider him a friend as well. But now we are living between two factions that are very much opposed to each other. Bobby Tracy, since he moved in, I must admit that he's done wonders to enhance the house, enhance the road. It's beautiful, it's absolutely beautiful. But if I stand out on my back patio, now I see an industrial storage yard, which I used to see agland, open agland. I just feel that we've lived out there for thirty-two years, and by making this an industrial storage yard, it reduces the value of our property. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who has something new to offer, perhaps? We'll, we'll close the public hearing at this time, but I want to ask staff, is there a feeling among staff that, you know, we've done this neighbor consultation before, is this appropriate in this one, or we've got enough to go? Enough compliance to go?
I, I believe that the, the opinions of the neighbors are, are well-known and put in the record, so I believe that additional meetings would not necessarily go any further than the standard conditions that are already met. I think it's a decision that the neighbors, I would encourage neighbors, as far as the C C N Rs, to talk about that amongst themselves and, and make some sort of decision. Again, the county doesn't review the C C N Rs, but Mr. Motta enclosed that in, in his comments, or to, to staff, and it's really an interpretation of what a nuisance is, because that's basically what the, the C C N Rs, no nuisances. So I, I think that's something that needs to be done on, on their basis together. But as far as meeting the county obligations, requirements, and ordinances, I, I feel that Mr. Tracy has met all of the requirements that the county has asked, and is in compliance with the, the ordinance for contractor storage yards.
Do we have any kind of monitoring clause in there? Maybe I didn't see it, or?
What we have right now is your typical annual inspection. If it is the planning commission's desire, we can, of course, increase that to, I would suggest on a monthly basis for the first six months to guarantee compliance. And I think that should, should satisfy the inspection portion.
I think sometimes in these cases where there hasn't been compliance in the past, that might be appropriate. What, what's the rest of the commission feel on this?
Well, yeah, I think restricted, obviously you have too much of their, of the conditions restricted. I mean, possibly he could add another two feet of screening without actually changing the fence. But that would be up to him. But, you know, the conditions we have and most of the inspections, as far as what we're charged with, I, I don't have a problem with the project. So CCRs have a life too. I don't know what, what time they, would they aspire.
Through the chair, I would just, again, we're not really reviewing that, but just to note, just to note the way that it was written, it appeared that it was a sixteen-year term, and then if no one made any actions, it automatically renewed on a ten-year period. So continued.
Yeah, that's not our, you know, it's not.
But it's not.
Civil matters. So anyway, I'm, I'm okay with the project. I feel sorry the neighbors don't get along. That's why I don't live in the country, so.
You know, I think we've, we've got contractor yards all over the county, and we run into this situation with neighbors a lot. I think we've got, over, over the years, we've gotten to where we can put in enough conditions of approval to make sure that the contractor remains a good neighbor. Nothing's going to be perfect, there's no doubt about it. But, yeah, I, I think from what I've heard here, he's making the efforts. I think some of these plantings, I think as they get a little taller, might screen a little bit more. But I, I'm okay with the, with the way it's, the way it's presented today.
I think also if, the way our system works, especially with compliance, you have a responsibility as a neighbor, if you see a violation or something that's not quite within the letter of the law, you have to call and notify the county. That's kind of the situation we're in today. I know that happens a lot in Three Rivers where I am. And when they come out, there's usually some, you know, reasonable course of action that satisfies both parties. So you got to help us in this, I guess is what we're saying. But the conditions are in there, and they can be enforced. And anybody that's involved in this project or a neighbor, you need to look at these conditions carefully and watch how they play out in the future.
Maybe the, the neighbors could have some dialogue to discuss how Mr. Tracy could improve, even though they, apparently he has improved his property fairly extensively, how they could improve, he could improve his property a little more to their liking. They shouldn't have to dictate to him, but maybe there's some comments they could have an open dialogue on in terms of barriers and foliage that would help the situation. I moved in from the country to the city two years ago, and I know in the country it's a little more open, it's a little more allowed in terms of things that are stored outside. So it sounds like this is, is a situation where there should be a little more dialogue between the folks that live on the street.
Is there any other discussion or comments from the commission? I think we've closed the public hearing, so.
Ready to make a motion if it's acceptable by fellow commissioners. Make a motion that we approve category.
Add the increased monitoring.
For the first year, monthly.
First year or six months?
I'd say the first twelve months, so.
One year?
Yeah. I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Quilach.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, folks. The ones of you that spoke up, you were very articulate. Appreciate it. Okay, we have item six, which is a discussion item on the housing, housing program presentation.
Our next presenter from the county is Sam Hossel. Hossel, was your dad a policeman? Mr. Hossel, was your dad a policeman?
No.
I was a policeman with Officer Hossel.
Different families.
Different families.
This, this is my family.
It's your family.
Well, you know he's going to do a good job. He's got the boss right there, so.
Hi, my name is Sam Hossel, and I'm the inspector for employee housing here in the County of Tulare. Employee housing, what is employee housing? It adopts and enforces statewide regulations for the construction and maintenance, use and occupancy of employee housing facilities, providing living accommodations for five or more employees or farm workers in order to assure their health, safety and general welfare. Excuse me. It allows property owners to exceed allowed use based on the zoning ordinance. It's mandated by the state of California. The facilities are located in the residential and ag zoning. So we're going to show you where they're located at throughout the county.
There are eight counties and one city that are audited by the state and state mandated in the employee housing program. All nine are evaluated by their performance to enforce the Employee Housing Act. And in two thousand and fifteen, Tulare County was found to be properly enforcing the employee housing provisions. You've received a copy of the statistical report from two thousand and fifteen where you're able to see the categories in which they assess and rate these fields. Were rated by our administrative as well as our inspection process. And Tulare County has the largest number of employee housing facilities, more so than all the other local agencies combined in the employee housing program. And just to shine a little bit of light, in two thousand and fifteen, we issued one hundred and sixty-five permits to operate. Those permits housed one thousand four hundred and forty-four employees, and there, there were thirty-six operating employee housing facilities that were operating illegally. But we have significantly reduced that amount already. That's, you should have received a copy of that, just a breakdown of what they, what they review and they audit us with.
Okay, this is one of the ones we had issues with. They didn't have a permit to operate for two years, as you can see the, the property there. They have sheds outside where people live at.
How many employees do they have in this one? Do you know?
Excuse me?
How many employees were housed here?
At this place here? There were supposed to be twelve. Somehow it got way out of hand. They had friends come over and move in, as you can see. So this is the same camp here. We do have some nice ones, county. This is after they got cleaned up. This is the same camp. This is one of the nicer ones here, Tenerosi. That's part of it. This is another part of it. So we've got the bad ones and good ones.
I have a background in charities, and the dog of charity used to regularly go out and get in the face of slum lords. Those people's life is not that good to start with and then further take advantage of it.
When you say there's four left, that means you haven't been able to clean them up?
No, four without PTO, yeah. Yeah, we've been, along with code enforcement, we, we do get them to comply.
Better flame it in the yard.
Excuse me?
You stood up to that one.
Any questions?
Yeah, good morning. I'm Dennis Lehman. I'm the building and housing manager, and employee housing program falls under myself. And I can tell you that over the years, I came from a city, I had no idea what employee housing was. I mean, I know the definition of the words, but when I came to the county, it was pretty obvious that we had a program that was kind of running us instead of us running it. And over the past five years, we've had a couple of people get involved with it, and we tried to keep them, and, and we would get somebody going, and guess what? They would send a resume out somewhere and get hired. So, but we've put Sam employee housing, and, and it has turned around. Sam was a former employee of the state at the employee housing level, so he understands it very deeply. This year, they've changed the scoring record for us because the state comes and assesses us every year. And they used to give good, okay, needs improvement. And we were on the needs improvement list several times, not a fact to be proud of. A fact to be proud of is now we aren't on that list. There are eight locations throughout the state that are on that, including Sonoma County, pretty prosperous county is on that list. So, so I feel like we've really turned this thing around. You know, it's not the, the eighty percent of the operators or the ninety percent of the, it's the four. It's the nine. It's the just bad hombres that we've got out there, and we've been working on getting that better, and Sam has pretty much dedicated himself full-time to this. This is a program that is pretty much self-funded from the applications. So it's, it's, it's budget neutral, fairly budget neutral, depending on the year, of course, and the amount of people, but fairly close to that. So I just wanted to give a, Mike has asked us to come up and give just a short presentation. And, you know, I, I can say we got the right guy for the job, and Maria has been helping out. Maria Flores has been helping out there with the paperwork and what have you. We've got a pretty good team in place now, and I, I don't want to see any backsliding to get on the negative list. I'd like to stay on the positive list. So with that, any questions about employee housing?
I'll have to break out my VCR tonight of The Grapes of Wrath.
Uh, yes.
I gotta go back.
You know, I can't say we've seen it that bad, but pretty close.
Do we still have some that open up and try to fly under the radar and don't permit at all?
Well, you know, looking back and studying over the years, what has occurred here is that, you heard the story, you know, Bobby Tracy bringing stuff in ahead of time. Well, people don't know. Sometimes people just don't know, and they just start bringing mobile homes in or, or convert a garage. And, and the next thing you know, we go out and bust them. Okay, something comes up, the sewage is overflowing, something, something comes up, and we get notified, and we go out and we find they don't have a program. They don't, they don't have, they aren't in a zone district that would allow that to happen unless they got into code, unless they got into employee housing. So what kind of started this is we took the violators and made them legal, getting them into employee housing. And so we started with people who just kind of did what they wanted to do, which is great. I align myself with that sometimes. But, but what I can say is that we've kind of brought them in now, and we're screening people coming into the employee housing program. I can tell you some of the places we went to employee housing, it wasn't employee housing, they were drug houses. These people, they didn't work. We could go there, and, and that's what we've seen. And we've gotten rid of a lot of those, and we've got, we've got a ways to go. Our job's not done. So that's kind of what started it, but, but now we truly do have people who are interested in getting it, of doing it and providing that service. So, but, but how it started, you know, we kind of started on a negative, but we've got the ship turned around now, and I feel pretty comfortable with it.
More than just this because you're my hero because you got rid of Tagus Ranch.
I have a brick from Tagus Ranch if you would like it.
Sorry, I'm not sure what you said.
Yes, yes. We're, we're working on, on some budgetary issues to kind of create a more of a legacy of that, where, where the money that we've invested, when it comes back, it gets reinvested into a demo fund. And I believe if we could do that for about ten years, it would fund itself in perpetuity. So we're, we're attempting to get to that.
Right thing to do to help people, but it's also the right thing to do because, you know, to get rid of these eyesores and economic development for Tulare County, people, people, like you said, you're a city person, saw mine, but when you see that, you go, oh my God, I can't believe that people live there and the city or county allows that to happen. It's not necessarily your choice, but.
I spent a lot of time at Tagus Ranch, you know, I, I, never when it was open. But, you know, the place had been broken into, all the copper had been stripped out of it. I mean, these people stole nails. I mean, it was, it was just incredible what they'd taken out. And, you know, the, the building was probably being held together pretty much by the graffiti paint that had been put on it over the past twenty years. But, you know, to go in there and to know that, you know, it's where Dwight Yoakam, Buck Owens, all of that, you know, kind of, that was a part of that, and that history we lost. And I, and I'm sad for that. But I'm not the property owner. My job is to determine if it's substandard or not, and it was substandard and it was time to go.
Oh, I heard rumors that you might retire. It's not allowed.
Well, unfortunately, the reality of, the clock is ticking, and, you know, you start to, you start to feel that. Any questions, gentlemen? Thank you. Thank you for supporting us and getting us out there and code enforcement. Mr. Elliot, I hope we're able to, to continue that in Three Rivers. Code enforcement is one of those things that, I'm, I'm off the subject, but I can't help myself. Code enforcement is one of those things, there's usually no winners. You know, you hope they both just come out fifty percent. You know, we're going to enforce the rules, but, but sometimes it's just property maintenance issues that we get on. And something was said today about us not having the staff. That's a true statement. When somebody calls and said, "I heard a rooster crow," and we're not supposed to have roosters in this zone district, I'm not going to send an inspector out for that. And tell me where they are. Tell me it's happening daily. You know, give me some hints, a rooster crowed. I live in the city and I hear rooster crowing. So, so I don't know where they live. But, you know, so, so we do have the staff and we do go out. It's called triage. We have to triage what we're going to spend our time on and taxpayers' money on. That's what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you. I always feel good after his updates. Okay, we'll move on then to the director's report.
Thank you. I'll, I'll just touch a little bit more on, on what Dennis and his team is presenting. We do have abandoned vehicle program that's quite successful. The, the employee housing has been fantastic. Jurisdictions have gone back to allowing the state to enforce the program. Fresno County was one that, that just gave, you know, they just wring their hands of it and said, "We can't, can't do it yet." Here in Tulare County, we've done it and we've done it successfully. So very proud. You're looking at, while you see the familiar face with Maria, she's doing outstanding in her role as working with the planning or the building and, and code department. And you're looking at the succession, the plan of succession is right there with Hector and with Mike Grove stepping up. So as Dennis rides off into the sunset, hopefully not too soon, we've got good people to, to step up behind him. So they're doing a fantastic job. So we, we will have some other presentations in the future, maybe the abandoned vehicle, which the cities are, are asking us how we do it, how we're so successful at, at doing it, that they're trying to replicate some of the things that we're doing there too. Just to touch, just real briefly, that we're, we're, the three of us, Hector, Aaron, myself and Dave Bryant are going to be heading up to Sacramento this afternoon. The, the county planning directors association annual conference is coming up. The, the county planning directors association annual conference is coming up tomorrow and Friday. And a couple of topics are going to be interesting. They're going to be talking about commercial marijuana. Director of OPR will be there. The air resource boards can be talking about the climate action plan and, and monitoring and, and those things. We've got our annual SEQA update, new, new land use issues that, that have been ruled on in, in the courts. So get some good, that's, that's one of the highlights every year is to learn how, how that goes. So there's a number of things and, and also schools being located, new school sites being located in ag lands and, and some concerns and things with that. So there's a lot of relevant topics that will be discussed that are really applicable to our, our county. So I'm looking forward to that tomorrow and the next day. I'll, I'll pass. Oh, the AT&amp;T, yes. We will be, and I think I mentioned this before about the wifi. There's a rollout of, of, trying to improve wifi to our disadvantaged communities. AT&amp;T was, has been awarded, I can't remember how many millions of dollars across the country for this. This is a, a, a federal rollout, really. But for us, they're looking at, they did improvements to seven of their existing sites, their cell towers, and they're looking at installing 29 additional towers that are specifically directed to providing broadband in our, our disadvantaged communities. So we're going to be bringing that through in, in clusters of a probably six, at least five, five to seven sites at one time, one, one meeting at a time. So we can get through them, but they're not too overwhelming and each one will have its own use permit associated with it. As the kickoff of that, the first time that, when, when we are ready to bring that forward, which, do we have a date yet?
Uh, no.
You know, it'll probably be six or eight weeks out, probably about eight weeks out. We have a representative from AT&amp;T that will give an overview of the program, of the rollout, the benefits, the, the, all of that, to give you, give your commissioners an overview of the project. And then we'll have the first five or seven sites bring, brought forward that day. And then as they complete the process, they'll be bringing more forward. But it's all, should be done and they're looking to have this whole thing built out in like 18 months. So they want to get all the entitlements in, in position as quickly as possible. So that's something to look forward to. Do you have anything?
I'm good.
You're good. Do you have anything?
Good.
Can I counsel? I, I guess that would wrap up the report.
Okay. So we're going to hear where these 29 towers are going, I take it?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're. They've brought through a PRC for, for the first seven sites. And so they're, they're ready to start submitting. We haven't received them yet, but they'll, they're, they should be within the next week or so submitting seven application for use permits. And those will identify the sites and, and they'll have photo sims of what they look like. The, the one component of, of this type of a broadband, wireless broadband is that they need line of sight for, for the tower to the thing. So, so this isn't something you can put way off outside. It's got a, it's, most of these are going to be in or near the, our different communities out there, so.
They could piggyback off the existing towers.
Some, they did, they did on, the ones that they could, they did, they were able to do that on seven of their, their existing towers. That was their first thing. Now they're having to locate these. They use the engineers to decide where they need to position them. Then they have to work with the local landowner to see if they can get a lease or, or whatever for that. So they're getting those secured, sites secured before they bring, bring things through, so.
Okay, well, is there anything else then from any of you county folks that you want to add? I guess we're not going to see Reed for a while, huh?
Yes, Reed, I, I.
That guy's on the fast track.
Yes, Reed has stepped on and stepped on, stepped through and stepped on. Reed has been appointed interim RMA director, so he probably won't be joining us too often in the future.
We're just getting to know that guy. Well, in Three Rivers, they want him to take the guardrails off, I can tell you that. Okay, so that's the director's report for today. Is there any other items you want to bring up? A quick update on the conference and I'll talk to Ed about this.
Yeah, I, I think, I guess we want to close the meeting or talk after the meeting or?
Yeah, we'll talk a little bit after the meeting, but I can say one of the highlights, and I talked to Phil Deffenbach at Lake Ouija, we're going to be touring Terminus Dam on May 6th. And he's totally excited because his forecasts are showing a lake full to the brim that day. And that's very unusual, so we'll all be participating in a historic event that day when we tour. Okay.
So do, do we want to close the meeting and talk about this? Or do we want to bring this up, what the plan is for the, for the conference during the meeting time?
Well, we, these guys got to get to Sacramento, so we'll, they're already going to have to drive through standing water anyway, so.
I did, I did want to ask, and maybe there's something they might want to, to contribute as one of the speakers, somebody might. I've got, I've got the county planning, the ag commissioner to, to speak. I've got Dan, someone from Dan Dooley's office in Sacramento to speak on water. But I, I don't have anybody really lined up other than that, so we're, how many, how many do you usually have?
Well, we've got that, we've got at least two of the supervisors opening for the opening session.
Okay.
We have a few, but.
But is there, is there something that you guys would like to maybe present to commissioners that you're kind of proud about here that you've done and?
We certainly can do a, a brief introduction of, of some, some current topics. Whatever you, we can come up with our own, but we can go off of your direction as far as what, what you feel would be the most relevant for your, your.
So what, the dates are the, are the May 5th?
The 5th and 6th. And we have really good cooperation from the Wyndham. It's, it's amazing because we're not on the hook to book any rooms, we just book as we go. They gave us a good rate and we're spending, you know, X amount of dollars on the breakfast and lunch, so the room's free. And, you know, so we're going to be saving some money and we think we have a good site. And then we're going to do some things in downtown Visalia and Three Rivers. We're also going to have a tour of Dry Creek. We haven't been back there in a while and Dry Creek's really a.
On, on the 6th, the way I see it, as, as the way it stands now, is we're going to probably take off and be on the 6th if, if you want to talk to the, the bus. Because I guess we were going to use, what's the name of the?
Classic Charter.
Classic Charter?
Yeah, Classic Charters has been good.
Okay, so we're going to be leaving the Wyndham about probably 8 o'clock in the morning. We're going to go up to Dry Creek, go through that, tour there.
That's a quirky.
Go up to the dam, do that tour there, go up to Three Rivers and have an early lunch. And then we're going to come down to Rob Hallardes's dairy between Lindsay and Tulare out here. And then I haven't contacted him yet and maybe somebody has that thing, but then I would like to take him over to McDermott's.
Yeah, we're going to, we're probably going to do a stop at McDermott's.
Because I think this might be something that the planning commissioners might be interested to see how, how they repurpose that, that old packing shed there and that old.
It's amazing.
So do you have a contact for that or do you want us to help you with that?
Well, I've, I've been talking to a couple of people in Lindsay. If you have a specific contact.
Well, we can probably talk to Kimball.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been talking to her.
And we could have, potentially we could have Ben do a presentation because he was instrumental in writing the grants that.
Yeah.
Got the money to do that conversion.
Well, you know what'd be nice for that is maybe that on the Friday session a little bit.
Yeah.
And then we go see the place.
And you see it on Saturday.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah.
It'd be awesome.
I think these things were proper for planning commissioners on land use and how they, because everybody's got these white elephants that, that they would like to probably.
Right. I think that'd be, and it'd be great to hear about it, get a little presentation, then go actually tour it.
And after that, then I wanted to go to Tulare, to the Heritage Center and go through that, the museum and show them what we do and tractors and stuff like that. And then in the meantime, while we're going, I, I've enlisted Nancy's husband, Charlie Pitliano, as my ag expert. He's going to ride and as we're going down the road at 60 miles an hour, we're going to be pointing out all the stuff.
He'll be good on the mic.
Kind of crops and everything. And I know most of them because that's what I do, I sell them. But sometimes at 60, it's good to have an expert out there.
Of course, but then everybody will be sleeping, so.
So anyway, that's, that's looking like, that's Saturday, the 6th, so that's the, the agenda. And I, I think it's going, going to be kind of enjoyable. I think we'll get it all done in a reasonable time. I didn't want to spend four hours on the, on the bus like we did down in, down in Riverside. That, just Riverside is just a big county, but.
Oh, that had it.
But I do, but I do need some more speakers. That's, I think that's what we need to. Usually about 45 minutes or so, another 10, 15 for, for questions.
Yes. Yeah, we're going to have plenty of that and I think it's going to be, it'll turn out to be really well attended because we have a good location and a good program. In that time of year, you can imagine how Tul, we wouldn't have known this when we planned for May, how the county's going to look this year on May 5th and 6th. It's going to be amazing. Okay, if there's nothing else, then we will adjourn until the next one.
All right.